All right, call needing order. All right, it's the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda. Looks like we have some changes. Uh, two items added under the consent agenda and three items deleted from action items. And one added under action items. So if there's any questions on that, approval of the agenda, motion?
So move.
Second.
Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Open forum. If there's anybody that would like to just address the council as a...
Sure.
Otherwise, we do have a, we do, I don't know if it's related to the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. There, a public hearing, you can speak about that also then. So the open forum is just for random, um, other issues. Nobody, all right, move on to the consent agenda. Uh, approval of minutes, approval of bills, purchase orders, approval of investments. Donation resolution number 202527, donation from the Melrose area arts council. Streets, parks, supervision supervisor step increase. Payout number six, uh, 2023 railroad avenue northwest, street utility improvements. Payout number seven, 2024, main street project, molder excavating. Uh, 2025, seal coat project invoice and a grass cutting notice. Um, I only have one quick question if the city engineer is here. Dave?
Yeah, okay.
Um, the railroad avenue, or is that pretty, that's all done? And this is the last payout? Okay, that's the final payout, all right. But do you have any other questions?
What's the grass cutting? I didn't see anything in the packet, or I missed it.
Yeah, that's an addition.
Yeah, so he should have received.
So that is four I. Yeah, I'll just, I'll just explain what it is. A notice sent to property owner at 134 Country Club Road and 223 Fourth Street Southwest. Um, the lawn's not getting mowed.
Oh.
So then we sent him notices that they need to mow it, otherwise the city will have to go and mow it for them.
Gotcha.
Um, and I can't remember, Scott, if you want to say something about that, that's then...
Yeah, this is typically good for the summer.
Right.
So in, in the city apartments for mowing, they'll get a bill?
Right. Is this not, this is not something that needs to go through the courts as a, as a weed destruction order, whatever, okay. All right, any other questions on that?
Is it a flat fee?
Uh, good question, I think it's time-based. Fee schedule, yeah, time-based, so, um, we don't know what the fee is, obviously.
That's fine, I don't need to answer this.
Okay, all right. Any other questions on that?
Maybe more than probably fifty dollars in that one, I think.
Yeah. No?
That's established already, so it's fine.
All right? Motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, we have a public hearing, um, public hearing to abate nuisance pursuant to Melrose City Code, section ninety-three twenty-one. That is five A. Um, that is, that is thirty-two Rose Park, southwest Melrose, Minnesota. So at six oh four, we open the public hearing. And if anybody has any, Scott's got a little background on that?
Yeah, uh, just, let me say, a little background information. This is a nuisance that's been identified at thirty-two Rose Park. Again, for background, the city's code at chapter nine, ninety-three. We've got a whole chapter on nuisances and regulating nuisances. And then, including then procedures for evading nuisance. And, you know, one of the items that's been defined as a nuisance, you know, section ninety-three nineteen, is, uh, it's entitled nuisance parking and storage. And, and this addresses inoperable, unlicensed vehicles that are being kept on residential properties outside. The, when these nuisances are found, I should go on to say, the next section, ninety-three twenty, uh, authorizes the police department to enforce the nuisance code. And so, you know, tonight, we're here, this is a, a program that the police department has been carrying on now for, gosh, I think like nine or ten years, where in the spring, there's, they go through the city and, and look for problems and notify the, uh, you know, the, the property owners, you know, of the issue. So the procedure, when, you know, a nuisance is, is discovered, is that, you know, written notices given to the, to the owner, and they're notified there's a violation, and what they need to do to, you know, correct the situation, and then they're given time to complete that. And, uh, when that's done, the police will come back and, and re-inspect when the time is up. And in most, many cases, it's taken care of. If there isn't, they'll get a second written notice saying, hey, you've got to correct this. And they're allowed a certain amount more time. If they haven't corrected it, at the end of the time given in the second notice, that's when we go to hear, to the council. Because at that point, uh, you know, we, you know, ask for a public hearing and ask the council to issue an order directing the owner to abate the proper, the nuisance. Before we do that, we have to serve notice of the hearing on the owner and also post, uh, notice of the hearing here in the city hall. And, and that's been done. It was posted on the, the fourth, June fourth, and, you know, the whole property was served on the fourth. So we've had about two weeks' notice now that this would be happening. With the hearing, you know, the council is sitting as a quasi judicial body. I mean, you're having a hearing to present you with information. You make a determination based on the information you receive, uh, as to whether or not, yes, this is a nuisance and are you going to issue your, uh, you know, and that's what we're here, you know, ultimately, is to ask the council to find there's a nuisance and issue an abatement order. This specific nuisance, I'll step aside a little and let Chief Mouse describe the situation, Scott.
Yes, as Scott explained, um, the yearly inspection that we do, uh, this picture was taken on the twenty-second of April, and you'll see by the folio, as things change, uh, they were given notice to take care of it, um, and that did not happen. Um, a follow-up picture was taken when, um, things had expired and was sent along with, um, notices to continue on that. Uh, I took a picture this morning to show and prove that still has not been resolved, as well as I ran the license plate. In the event that they have purchased tabs online or had them in their house or whatever else, none of that has happened yet either. Um, this vehicle has come within our nuisance inspections for actually several years in a row. They continue to purchase tabs for it. We haven't gotten to this point with this vehicle yet. So, um, the intent after this hearing, if approved later in the action items, is to verify that they are either going to bring it into compliance, as well as meet all the criteria, current registration, operational vehicle, as well as it has to have insurance so it's road-ready. Some of the other things, like I said, have not been checked just because they purchased current tabs for them, so we haven't gone beyond that. But if, uh, abatement is ordered for the, for the vehicle and the property, we're going to make sure all those are met. And if they choose to, they can, and if they choose not to, then we'll work through the remainder of the process to see where it goes from there. It's been, like I said, and I think the letters went out, this photo was taken the twenty-second of April, letters went out the eighth or the ninth. I didn't check my paperwork for sure, but, so it's been probably six weeks to bring this vehicle into compliance. Started with sixty, we're down to one, so things are working well. And we did issue some administrative citations this year, thirteen of those, and this is the only one left over, so. That's been working real well, because people called right away, and realized seven hundred and fifty dollars could be coming out of that thing.
Right. Now, with the vehicle, does the notice go to the vehicle owner? Or to the property that it's sitting on?
This one, we went directly to the vehicle owner.
Okay.
They, uh, rent the adjacent property and they store several vehicles on this parcel. Um, the property owner is aware of it, but they didn't receive anything for the property.
Right. I can see where this will get sticky, because obviously that property owner's not the vehicle owner. So it's sitting on that property, but, yeah. Can see where that gets a little hairy.
Yep. Vehicle owners, the owners.
Been working, okay. Communicating with you, okay. Any other questions for...
These tabs were purchased or not?
Have not, but that's why I ran the license plate to verify in case they said, uh, buy mail and have put them on yet or anything else.
And if tabs are put on, at this point where it sits, it's fine, because it's not on a public road. Is that accurate or not?
No, it's not.
Okay.
That's one portion of it to bring in compliance, and that's been what we've kind of deemed as, that's good enough.
Actually, you can't get tabs without insurance.
Right.
Right.
Insurance can very well be ruined anyway.
Yeah, true.
So, um, and that'll be some of the issue too. And as well as operational, we have folks around town that have project cars, they're going to start one out and, yeah, I'm going to fix that, and then I'm going to fix it two years later, and then fix it two years later, that's for my kid, and the kid now doesn't live at home anymore. So those are the projects, or the things that become this way, and people, it's, it's good intention, but things happen. Just forget about it, we just can't get two or three repairs, so it is.
Any other questions? Always public hearing, now let's open, go ahead, Scott.
Just to wrap up, yeah, if there would be anybody else that want, would want to speak to the council before the public hearing, you know, before you close it, we want to give them the opportunity to do that. Uh, just so the council, you know, is aware that, you know, if you do issue the order, the next step is that, you know, that order will be served again on the owner, allowing them time to comply with your order. If you, if they don't comply, the next step would be to file the, the order with the court and ask the court for an order confirming that, yes, this is a nuisance, and the order would give them, the court would give them so much time to correct it. The difference is, is that the court's order would include a language that says, and if you don't, the city of Melrose is authorized to go on to the property and abate it, the nuisance, and you will have to pay the costs of the, of the city's abatement. So those would be the, the next steps. We haven't had to go that far for a few years yet, but ultimately, that's what's, you know, behind the order.
Right. Would we name the actual land property owner also in that court order, or not?
No, I think we would just...
Just the vehicle?
Vehicle.
Okay.
Could the owner trailer it to another location, just, or is it in compliance, out of the city limits?
If it was out of the city limits, if they rented a storage shed and parked it in there. So it wasn't sitting out in the open in a residential area. Any other questions? Thank you.
Did you want to speak about anything, or anybody, this is public hearing now, so now the public gets to speak about this topic, if you've got anything to say. About this one? What's that?
About getting hard of hearing signs, Phil?
Oh.
Oh.
Sounds should have been asked.
Should have been.
Public forum.
Right.
You might want to.
Yeah, we can jump back up there, company, temporarily, if there's someone, okay. Yeah, all right, so if there's no public comment, and no other input, we'll close this public hearing at six fifteen. And we're going to jump up to, real quick, to, back up to the open forum, so you can have a chance to speak. So if you'd like to stand up and talk?
So I live on Main Street, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old little girl, and she is hard of hearing, and I'm here to ask the city to be, to put out, um, public hard-of-hearing signs. Um, in Main Street, people go so fast on that street, and we all know that little toddlers go fast.
What's your address?
Four East, Main Street.
Four East, okay. Typically during open forum, we don't really comment on that, but we do take things into consideration, so, you know, we'll, 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 um, think about that, maybe somebody will be in touch with you.
If you want to leave your, yeah, I can grab your name.
Yeah, yeah, I want to grab your name. So not to put it on camera. All right. We are going to move on to, and we'll address the abatement order later, action item. Public hearings, we got that done. Reports, HRA director, Barry Hag.
I have pictures, Barry, I'll bring them for you.
Barry Hag, I'm the executive director at, uh, Posty Manor, and I just wanted to pretty much give some updates on... Okay, there we go, that's us. So, you know, there's been a lot of changes in the last year and a half, and I just wanted to make sure that folks knew what we had to offer and, and some of the changes that, they've all been very well received, and, uh, I, I gotta say, I've got a great board. They've been very good and working with me and stuff, um, so it's, it's been a treat, it really has. As you can see, we've got some new landscaping, we've got some new benches, new chairs, new lighting, this is some of the exterior things. The lighting is also in the back of the building, where we have some parking spots. The lighting was done locally, and we went with something that shined down. So we weren't impacting the building or the neighbors. It's really brighted up nice, it's, it's off quite a bit. There were times when, I have cameras, security cameras outside, and there were times when you'd see people sitting out here that weren't residents, and that has stopped. Not that that was a problem, it just made some of the tenants a little uneasy, they didn't know who they were. So we've also been open since nineteen seventy-one, that's when we took residents in. So fifty-four years they've been, we've been serving the community. It's been a really good relationship. The city, the county, and the state do not contribute to us financially. We do not take any taxes or levies. Folks, I think, have some misconceptions on that, so I definitely wanted to make sure people understood that. Everything we did is from HUD, we are a public housing facility, and so we're, we're federal. And as the government's changing, so is our funding. We're hanging on for the ride, so far, things are going great. And every administration changes, so if you've done it long enough, you've seen the changes. Couple of the things that had happened recently is, um, we had wallpaper, it's some gated flooring and whatnot. All of the wallpaper's been removed, been painted. We have put in all new, uh, all new carpet in the, in the common area. And also now with vinyl planking. HUD is big on no soft surfaces, and we're very fortunate, because we don't have the issues other facilities have. The reason they do that is they don't want contamination with ethanol or meth. So the soft, the soft surfaces are throwing back, makes for quite a bit more abatement. So it's, it's done very, very well. The, let's see what, there it is. There you go, another view of it. Uh, we also just did a brand-new roof. So this does it, oh, it does, it, this does show the new cap, uh, dirt cap, which is the same color as the audience. As you can see, normally, there's a fair amount of people sitting out there, quite often, in the afternoons and in the evenings. So it's, it's nice to get the feedback. We got a couple roses, we got a couple tenants that are in love with roses, so we put them in, and it seems to fit with the name. One on the right, one on the left. This is an old kitchen, so as we, as tenants move out, I flip the units. I renovate, we remodel the kitchen. As you can see, it's the over-styled carpet, the over-styled tile. There's this island here, excuse me, this wall here, and then what you don't see is a little twenty-inch stove. The twenty-inch stove makes it really difficult for the full-size condition. So as people transition out, whether they move on, nursing home, whatever the case may be, we flip it. This is an example of one that's been flipped. So we've got the new flooring, we've got the full-size stoves, we cut the wall back, and everything's been painted. This has been a hit. So it's been a lot of fun to see people get excited about this. We're getting a lot of cookies, a lot of, uh, cookies, and we're also getting a lot of full-size cookies, which didn't happen before. This shows it from a different angle. That was the cabinet that was next to the twenty-inch. We put it on wheels, some people use it, some don't. Kind of becomes the junk drawer, whatever they want to have on it, but the next thing is they can move it around wherever they want. New lighting has gone in, we've got, uh, what you don't see in this picture is we've got ceiling fans with lights in the living room, as well as in the bedrooms. The bedroom's never had a light on a switch, they had a switch outlet, real common in the seventies, a lot of houses had it. With, with this now, they can just hit a switch. And it's a double switch, so they can have a fan on and, and the light, and control it independently. This shows our upstairs community room, we reeded the carpet here and the vinyl planking. This is a little smaller, more of a intimate setting, so that the apartments are small. So when the tenants have family, and this is used every single Wednesday for a car gig with one of our tenants, they come in in the afternoon, they bring in their treats, and they hang out. Off that door to the right is an upstairs deck, and we've also got, that bench that you see on the left is now on the deck. It puts it before the picture of the station. Uh, this room gets used a lot. This is the downstairs community room. I love having my office across the hall from it, because I hear a whole lot of people laughing. And it's used every single day. They're playing bunkum. They don't gamble. At least if they do, I don't know about it, but, uh, it's, it's used quite a bit. It's here again, we had new carpeting put in, new vinyl planking. The kitchen is in the process of getting new closets, um, just, they do upgrades as we can. This shows the kitchen area, and we do potlucks in here, we do, um, Jean Helmerin is with LSS, and she's famous for her cream can, you know, so we always have one or two of those. And, uh, nobody misses it. I mean, if they're working, then they're going to miss, but otherwise, they're there, it's really fun. And this allows us to do that. And, and here again, they can, tenants can reserve this, and they don't want to rent it, they can reserve it, and then they can have their family events. On Wednesdays, during the school year, St. Mary's Church will come in at least once a month and have an event. Sometimes they have it upstairs, sometimes they have it down here, more often than not, they have it down here. Baking cookies, making cards, engaging the kids with the, with the, you know, residents. It's, it really goes very well. And I'm done with that part, so let me go back to some notes. So the, the average age of my tenants are seventy-seven. We are in eighteen-plus facilities, so what happens there is we give preference to elderly and disabled. Most people that are over eighteen don't gravitate to the smaller apartments and the personality, the, the tenants we have there. They're a little more free, they're, they're not, when you're moving in, people aren't taking notice. So it's kind of like having their grandparents watching them, and it's, it's natural selection that way. We do have three people that are, one's ninety, one's ninety-four, and one's ninety-five, they've been there a long time. We are seeing a younger demographic, and by that, I mean more in the forties. And it's, as I mentioned, we also, you know, preferences for dis, for disabilities. So that, that gets you, gets you in the door. As far as upgrades on the inside of the building, as I mentioned, we did the carpet and whatnot. We also did new interior lights, so the whole upstairs has had new fixtures, we, we had the old fixtures retrofitted, made it much brighter, like, we went with LED, so it could save them some money. We've also got, as I mentioned, in the, in the apartments, new lighting in there, it's been a bit here. We flipped fourteen units since I've been there, and, and when did we get there? Two years?
Um, yeah.
Yeah?
So it's been, it's been busy, but it's also really been good. I mean, that's what we're looking to do, we're wanting to flip them as soon as possible when people move out. And one thing I also do is, as, as I get a unit flipped, I let folks in the building who are current tenants, they want to move into that unit, they can't, and that allows me to just put it on there. And I've had two that have done that. They love it, they, you know, some, one of them had been in her unit for eighteen years, and now she moved to a brand-new unit. So it was a really nice refresh for her. The other thing that I wanted to mention is LSS, we've got it in the, we've got it in the building. There's seven days a week, there's eight to four, it's self, the, the individuals are paying for it themselves. We don't, uh, cover anything along those lines, we provide them office space. That, that allows folks to age in place, and it's not just more body coverage, they are in front of people. It's Cindy Devolz, Cindy Cheezy, and Jean Helmerin, you know? They treat everybody like they would family, and I, I can't tell you what a treat this for me. I hear about things that are happening in the building through them, because they're the point of contact, and they have been there twenty-plus years. So it's, it's really, really, uh, a great setup for that. The other thing about that too is it gives a lot of the families peace of mind. They know that if, the most common thing I see is as people are aging, medication plays a huge deal. Happened with my mom. She took her morning meds at night, she took her night meds in the morning, and she might take them three times in one day. So LSS goes in, monitors that, gives them their medications, and everybody's doing better as a result of that. It's, it's really nice to have that as a, as a perk. It's made my job easier, it certainly has made it a lot nicer for the tenants. The only other thing I'd like to add is, um, the city crew has been amazing. Every, I shouldn't say everybody, we have a lot of people that require public transportation, whether it's TriCap, or other companies that are coming in. The snow removal was so nice, because we have folks that have mobility issues, and they do, the city crew does an awesome job of keeping that street clean and keeping our entrances clear. We maintain our entrances, but it's those piles that we get. Somebody pulls in and trying to get the door open in a locker, that gets to be a little lonely at times. That's really about it, short and sweet. If anybody's got any questions, I would be happy to answer that. If anybody wants to swing by and take a look, please do. The front doors are always unlocked, they do lock at night, as you know, and, uh, you know, it works out really well. We, uh, I haven't got the security cameras on the backside of the building yet, that's coming, but it's a very secure building, it's very safe. My whole philosophy is, I've done this for a long time. My whole philosophy is I want the building to be surrounded with my mom, and it's worked out really well. Any, any questions?
Got to give you a big compliment, I mean, you're doing a great job there by the sounds of it.
Thank you, I appreciate that, yeah.
Looks very nice and...
It's a pleasure.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I'd promise him my parents there, so.
Yeah, it, it really is a lot, it's been a really good job, and, uh, I, I really like it. I'm going to be there until I retire, so that's my plan. Please let me know if that changes.
I don't think it's going to.
So far, everything's really going really well. And, uh, it's, it's just one of those things that, when I drive by, I smile. When I see the folks enjoying what's going on outside and stuff. And the other thing I'd want to add, yeah, in closing, is the community of tenants really takes care of each other. It is amazing how many times people will come downstairs from the upstairs around Main floor and say, hey, I haven't seen so-and-so, can we check it out? You know? People will go away... People will go away, visit family, they'll let us know so that they don't create this anxiety for other tenants. It's, it's really warm community. And in many cases, it's, it's given those folks so much more social interaction. And if you sit in your room and stare at the TV, it does not bode well. You get out, you get engaged, you're going to have a happier quality of life. Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Okay. Reports President of Centricare Melrose. Jen, thanks for coming.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I am here just to kind of give some updates on what's happening up at Centricare and then also take any questions that anybody has. So projects, we'll start with projects. For those of you that have ever visited our emergency room, we have, the first room that's closest to the lobby, we received a grant to turn that into a safe room. And we currently, that's our behavioral health room. We have a gate in there and we've got some, some functionality. But we will be starting some construction in August that will turn that room into a safe room where a patient, instead of needing to be a one-to-one, can be in that room and they're safe by themselves. Staff are right outside the door. If we need to have a staff member in there, we can. So we're super excited about that. And then the other project that will be kicking off here sometime this summer is, and I've got lots of questions about this, but nuclear medicine. Currently, what's happening right now is there is a mobile truck that you might see parked outside of our facility. That truck goes to Painesville, Melrose, Sex Center, and Long Prairie. Each of the sites have it one day a week. The FDA no longer approves a mobile camera, so the mobile trucks will be going away. And so we will be, starting July 1st, that truck will be stationed just in Melrose. Two days a week, Tuesdays and Fridays. And we can fluctuate that schedule to meet patients' needs if we need to. But in our old hospital, the emergency room that was in our old hospital will be remodeled and converted to, where a new nuclear med camera will be installed. And so we will go away from the truck, which will be great, especially in the weather that we have for Minnesota. Whether it's snow or rain, it'll all be in-house. So we are hopeful for a go-live later this fall. So those are the two projects that'll be happening. And of course, it's a loss to our, our communities next to us. But we're hoping to continue to keep that volume in Melrose and make it more so a service so patients don't have to drive to St. Cloud or Wilmer. So, any questions on that? Okay. The last time, I wasn't at a formal council meeting, but we had talked about equipment and how that has changed over time with how we purchase our, our equipment. And so we've been working with Colleen and the ambulance coordinator on an IV pump lease. I believe in the past, the ambulance had purchased pumps because we have to have separate equipment, just with all the updates and how we share within Centricare. And so they were able to return those pumps. And since then, I've been working with our legal team on how do we come up with a lease? And so I have the documents. Colleen gave those to me tonight. We're hoping, our new fiscal year starts July 1st, so we're hoping to have this go-live by then. What'll happen is that each of the ambulances will have an IV pump. It'll be a yearly lease. And then if they bring a patient in on the pump, we will keep that and they will take a different one from us and vice versa. If we have a patient on the pump, they'll take ours and they'll give us theirs. That way, they will have the board, the chip they call it, that has all of the medication and dosages in there for them to use as well. And if we have updates, which we do routinely, and routine maintenance on the pumps, we'll just partner with the ambulance to bring them up. So we're hopeful. Right now, they're using ours, it's working. We just need to have something formal and writing. And so I think this is a really good connection and the agreement, I think, will work out. So, any questions with that? All right. Recruitment. I always get asked about that. Have you found any more docs? Because that's always a question. And, you know, when, when I say this, some people will be like, oh, that's a really long time away. But that's, this is how it works, right? So a lot of the times, doctors interview in their second year of residency. And so I am super excited to say that we have a new doctor, Dr. Kendra Hollenbeck, who will be joining us in September, late September, early October of 2026. So a year and three months yet, but we are still super excited about that. And we'll continue to, we would love if we could get two or three more docs in our community. It's really hard to find doctors that want to do everything. And so changing how we look at things. Let's see. Community-wise, we are again partnering with Farmer's Market this year and providing the, doing the donation from Centricare for the pop tokens. So that's the power of produce. It's exciting for us. We've doubled our amount. And I'm thinking that double amount is probably not even going to get us halfway through, but we'll continue to look through that. And then the biggest thing, and I'm sure, you know, the city is having conversations with this as well, with all the different changes that are happening. But Centricare is really focused on what's called our journey ahead. We have a lot of changes coming forward, a lot of financial headwinds. Reimbursement rates are definitely decreased. And 70% of our patients that we see are now on either PMAP, Medicaid, or Medicare. And so of that, we get a 1% reimbursement when the cost to charge is anywhere from 5% to 9%. So we will be doing a lot of work within the next probably six months as we enter into our new fiscal year on what changes we need to make to adjust to those headwinds that are coming. So that's my work for probably the next six months, looking ahead.
Did you say 79% of your patients?
Seventy, 7-0.
70% of the patients you see completely have.
Yep. A year ago, it was, or two years ago, it was between 30 and 40. But just the average, you know, from one, from April to May, we had a shift in, in just in like our Melrose finances, we had a huge shift into Medicare Advantage. And, you know, that's just your population and, and to budget for that or prepare for that is really hard because you don't know how many will be listed with us in Melrose or as, as the system as a whole.
Okay. Yes. Patient visits, right.
Correct.
So say of 70% of your whole patient, you couldn't possibly, whole patient population, it's just that it visits.
The visits, correct. Yep.
A lot of the older generation probably visits a little more.
Yeah, we have an aging population and we're just not seeing a lot of younger patients. You know, there's, there's just a mishap there. And, you know, following the pandemic, a lot of the, as you guys know, right? Rates didn't come down. You know, supply rates are high. We want to be competitive with wages. And so it just forms this gap like, like this. And so how do you continue to maneuver that? So lots of discussions taking place. While trying to keep the services that we have to provide care close to home.
Tony kind of got what I got, so. We were thinking alike, so we're glad.
Yeah.
Could I be a disconnect there somewhere? Yeah, that was it. Number visits, yeah. Hey, any other questions?
Any other questions for me?
For Jen?
I don't.
Thanks for coming, giving us update. Thanks for working with the 5E pump thing and all the...
Absolutely. Hopefully we'll have that done by July 1st, so. All right.
All right. Police Chief Craig.
Good evening. May in our traffic area, 29 citations, 72 verbal warnings, five written warnings. Last month, we had, excuse me, May 25, we had 281 calls requests for service. And May 24 was 315. We ended last year on 1409 in May and this year's 1403, so we're hovering in the same area. 14 agency assists, those numbers continue, continue to stay consistent, so that's good to see. Some areas I want to highlight, golf cart ATVs with the weather turning, people are bringing those back out of storage or using them more again. Permits are required for all of those. The ATVs, the permit is free, but it's required under state law to have one, as long as you have a DNR sticker. And then the golf carts, the permits are good for three years for a $50 fee. And there's some restrictions on things here and there. And we've had some people that are, they've been pulling things offline, convenience, whatever else, and they're not always catching the restricted roads and those sorts of things. So we're catching up with them periodically on roads they're not supposed to be traveling completely on, crossing, obviously as possible, but not completely driving. So just getting people back on the right page where things are supposed to be at. But otherwise, things go really well with those. Parking's been an area of concern that we're addressing more of this year. A lot of people are bringing home boats and campers and those sorts of things. And then it's home for the summer and it doesn't leave the street besides maybe two, three weekends a year. So we've been working on that, especially in month of May. And it's been going really well. Some people are a little frustrated because they have lesser places to store them on the property, but it's a, convenience isn't always something that is the best option for the neighborhood or for, for the area. So we're trying to work through some of those, but it's been going well. Squad cars in the same position it's at months ago, months ago. So we won't make this parade. Travis had asked me if he'd get in the month and the hope was there, but it's not going to happen for graphics or vehicles. So winter parade, reset. We won't say which one, but we'll say winter parade. But stuck with the convenience of transportation. Area of highlight, so Mr. Host, who you guys approved on a conditional job offer last month, has passed their post-licensing. Everything else is done, so it's now just, I talked with him before the meeting, he's going to check his schedule and we're going to get a start date and we're going to start training. Hopefully by early fall or late summer, we're back to full staff for the first time in currently 18 months, so. Questions?
Do you ever had an opening where your staff is mostly there? Being I'm the newest member, I would like to meet your staff. Just I haven't had a chance to do that yet.
Yeah. We actually, towards the end of a day, we're having a train in July. That might be a good option. I don't know, part-time staff might not be there, but full-time will be. I think we're starting at 4:00.
It'd be a good start at least.
Yeah. Yeah, it might not be an option. I'll, I'll check in for sure what time we're doing our training that night and I'll send an email to the whole council.
All right, thank you.
If nothing else, can you tour the police department and see what we do have for current squad cars, you know, and what we're waiting on?
That'd be cool, because that's one thing I haven't done either, so.
Yeah. Be good at the end of the workday kind of thing too, so you don't have to break up a day.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Attorney Scott Demick. Last report, as far as I know. I see you decide to pick up some side jobs.
No plans. Yeah, my, my report, I've got three items noted, the e-billboard lease and the fire escrow program and the nuisance abatement. And I don't know how much more you want to hear about nuisance abatement, but I think we've covered that. And the e-billboard and the fire escrow are coming up later in the agenda. But, you know, so these are some topics that the council will be discussing later. So on that, I don't have much to add.
I guess, do we just let them go?
Questions?
Do you guys have any big, like tough questions for them?
I want to heckle them, I just got nothing.
Well, I will go back to my seat then.
Okay, appreciate it. Hang around after meeting, okay?
I don't even have an attorney joke.
I got a couple that can sit here.
Did I say something?
Well, I, I only remember one attorney joke. They've kind of fallen out of fashion. Yeah, but for some reason, I remember this one. It's, you know, what's, what's brown and black and looks good on an attorney? A Doberman.
I like it. Coming from an attorney.
That's good.
All right. Community Development Director Sheila.
So it has been a busy summer. We don't see as many large construction projects this summer, but there's a lot of conversations taking place behind the scenes on next steps and future developments. Some like it hot, the new coffee wine bar next door here at Riverside Flats is going to open next week. Woods and Irons, the new golf simulator business, which is going in 406 Main Street, hopes to have a certificate of occupancy by August 1st. They're painting right now and you're going to see the steel siding going up on the outside pretty soon. Stern's Electric is putting up signage and pouring concrete for their parking lots. They hope open, hope to be open, ready for their members by mid-August. And I had a conversation this week with the bakery owners. They said soon. So hopefully end of the month or for sure during the month of July. So then the bakery would be back open. We have started some discussions, MADA, the school district, and some large employers around the city about daycare challenges and the availability of daycare. Recently, a home daycare closed and there's just a lot of concern about just a lack of options. We all know about the regulations that the state was putting on home daycares and making it a challenge. So we're going to convene sort of a task force in July of people really interested in this issue to talk about what maybe the city can do to help. The city up in Little Falls, the city in Alexandria, they've come up with some really creative solutions. City of County down by Glenwood, the city and the county down there. And so we want to have those conversations as well because it really is a business retention and expansion issue. When the school district is trying to hire teachers, one of the questions they have is can we have daycare for our kids in town, employers as well? So that's an issue we're going to start tackling. And then also, hopefully Jolene doesn't mind for the chamber, but we want to welcome everybody to Riverfest next week. Events will be in the Sock River Park. We are excited, we're going to try a shuttle bus. So on Saturday from 3:00 until 10:00, you can take a shuttle bus from St. Mary's Church down to the park, hoping that takes care of some of the parking challenges that we have. And then also, I want to invite you to save the date for Night to Unite on Wednesday, August 6th. It's a regular farmer's market night, but it's kind of farmer's market plus. The city will be your host, fire department, ambulance, just lots of really fun things. A meeting of neighbors and cultures, and that's our goal for that night. And I have some more agenda items later.
Thank you.
David Ball, City Engineer.
All right. Good evening. Most of good news for the council tonight. As you can see, Main Street's coming along. That striking wall makes it look like it's almost done. The lawns are green next to it. As far as I know, if people aren't happy, they're at least somewhat satisfied with how things are going. So I'm going to take that as a win. We got the parking issue at the bowling alley rectified, taken care of. Contractor ended up replacing the curb out there dime and we paid for the concrete behind it, so a fair solution. Otherwise, River Avenue, we close that out tonight. That one's all done. Look for final payment on Highlands. Maybe at the next meeting, they have only four sections of curb to replace because it's holding water. After they do that, we'll put on the final lift and pay them off. So hopefully come next meeting, we'll only have our new product on the, on the books that we started a month and a half years. Progress is being made.
Thanks for taking care of that curb down there.
You guys been over there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Way better.
It's a better situation.
Thank you.
As far as I know, Craig's happy, so.
Thank you. I know I'll be happy too.
Even the mammals.
Yes.
There's a funny story in that, Tony. I told my guy, I said, if those are more than a quarter inch, they're going to pull them up. The contractor never had anybody watch him so close, but when you know the level that's expected, you create it.
Hit the spec, right? That's all I can ask. Yep. So appreciate that.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. City Administrator.
The lawmakers returned to the Capitol on June 9th to finish up their work for, for a special session and completed their remaining work that they did at least in the session. Of note, taxes, there was the repeal of the electric exemption for data centers, which is something that we were watching very closely. And there's a change to the cannabis gross receipts. to the cannabis gross receipts. Instead of getting a 10% tax, they're going to be taxed at 15%. TIF, there's an extension on temporary pooling increment authority for one year from 25 to 26 for projects that create and retain jobs. And EMS, which is emergency medical services, there will be additional funding for ambulance attendant training and education, and we have a webinar coming up on that. They had talked about some of the things that we were concerned about with the middle housing. They did some things with that, but nothing that really was too impactful for us. And then, the other thing that was of concern is the LGA. And they ended up not doing anything with LGA as far as cutting it. So, that's good. The other thing I've mentioned I want to talk about tonight, and there's a letter in, in the mayor's folder for signature, Sterns County established the Sterns County Housing Trust on January of 2024 to promote the creation and preservation of housing throughout Sterns County. It was designed to encourage production and preservation of housing units. It's managed, the housing trust fund is actually managed by the Housing and Redevelopment Authority of Sterns County. And they released an application for funding of projects, owner occupied and rental rehab and new construction, as well as infrastructure. Information about the program was included in the utility bills in May. Staff is working with residents to complete applications. And so far, thirteen homeowners have expressed interest with, in applying with four, is it four, completed applications forwarded to the housing trust fund. They have a meeting on Monday to go through their first round of applications. So, at the regular MADA board meeting on June 12th, the board unanimously authored a letter signed by President Bob Mayers expressing support for the application submitted to a housing trust fund from the residents of Melrose. A similar letter is included in your packet with the request from the signature from the mayor. So, that is my report for now, and then I have some other stuff later on.
Okay, as far as that housing trust fund, do you know how that gets funded? Is that...
Through the county. Yeah, it's through the county.
Through the county, I mean, I'm just curious, because you see these funds come up, and it's like, well, where does the money come from?
It gets pretty much, is there other sources, or is it...
It was, it was from the county, and then I think Minnesota housing.
Yeah, Minnesota housing, that's the other one, yeah.
Okay. Now, I got to ask a question. Where's Minnesota? How does it get the money from? You know, it's one of them things I...
It's taxpayers.
Yeah, exactly. So, eventually, it's, it just follows up to the, to the state eventually, probably. So, anyway, just had a question. That does it for our reports. Thanks for the report. On action items, council to review and give consideration to the abatement of nuisance conditions at 32 Rose Park Southwest in Melrose. Spoke about this earlier, had the open here, public, public hearing. Does anybody else, else have any other questions about that?
Did the car owner show any interest in getting it resolved? Did they have a hardship? I feel...
It's just sitting there.
Okay. Council to consider adopting resolution number 2025-28. Care to get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Seven B through D were deleted, and seven E. Let's see, Fire in City Melrose, Fire Marshal reached out to Fire Chief Woody about a fire escrow account. And Sheila has some background.
So, after a recent fire in the city, the state fire marshal reached out to Fire Chief Woody about a fire escrow account, which allows the city to hold a portion of insurance proceeds to ensure action is taken on affected structures. We had Attorney Scott Demick research this, and to participate, the city needs to adopt a resolution opting into the program to establish the account. After that's done, we notify the Department of Commerce, and then we get added to the list of cities who could require insurance proceeds to be escrowed to recover, repair, and demolition. And Tom brought this to us, so I'll let him.
Yeah, so, like Sheila said, the recent structure fire we had in town here, State Fire Marshal's office must be seeing more and more of houses not being fixed up. And so, he's like, this is one of the tools in your tool belt that you guys could adopt and use going forward, is keeping a percentage of their insurance money, putting it, like you said, in the escrow. And then, once the house is either back to repair, fixed up, demolished, whatever, and it's to the city's standards, then the money would go to the, to the homeowners. But it's just a way to keep that intact, so that it doesn't sit. I know we've had some situations in town here where it takes three, four years before they fix up a house. It's been, hate to have that much control over, but I think it's something for the betterment of the community and for the health and safety of everybody and the neighbors around. So, looking at that, the only thing I did not see in, in this resolution is, was there, should there be a percentage of what amount that we are going to keep? I know the State Fire Marshal's office, the document that I received said 25% of it, but I, I feel, Scott, who I speak to, too, is, I feel we should have some type of a percentage listed within this on how much we keep until the house is fixed up or demo.
And just, in the statute, they call out up to 25%? So, I, I don't know that we need to recite that in the resolution, saying yes, we're going to be part of this program. Because if we're going to be in the program...
It says it in there.
That's, that's part of the rules.
And the tricky part is, nobody knows, just to put blanket 25% on it, you don't know what the insurance proceeds are, because some people don't have full insurance. Some people might have a lot of insurance.
Right.
So, do you, do you need a 20, just a flat 25%? Or do you take it on a case-by-case basis?
Well, to...
You know, to, to, I mean, in my mind, I go, well, if they're not doing anything with it, demo expense.
Right.
And that's, you know, how do you, how do you judge that? It's a case-by-case basis.
Right. And to me, it's just a, it's a way to get them, it's like, oh, if they're putting in something in there, it's going to get them to...
A little incentive, right, to do something with it.
Yeah.
And with default, is if there is a fire in the city, so it's, we want, we want funds withheld, you know, it directs the insurance company to pull back 25% of the actual cash value of the insured real property at the time of the loss, or 25% of the final settlement, whichever is, so, 25% to be able to...
Yeah. You actually know if that, those two documents mirrored into one with ours, or how that worked.
I mean, it's, I'm just, I'm looking at the statute.
Right.
That's created a program, so it's, it's a lengthy statute, goes on for four pages. This is the state of Minnesota. And it's kind of a one-size-fits-all. This is the program of state office. Are you in or you're out? Resolution is saying we're in.
If there's a lien on the house, who gets the funds first, then?
I, I'd have to go back and look. It talks about, there's probably a mortgage, and the mortgage company's got to claim, and how all that gets settled out. If we get first, or the mortgage company gets first, or...
And you...
It's addressed in the statute, but, and I didn't, I didn't read it that closely, other than just about, but, yeah, I mean, there's other many holders that they get. And opportunities for hearings, if somebody lost a challenge for 25% of it. So, if it's there, you know, the money gets held back, you know, but, you know, how much we actually get of that 25% of the money goes to other folks, there's a, a process through kind of sorting this and cleaning this. But at least there's money at hand, it doesn't just walk away.
So, so we have, so we have a structure, obviously, that's disrepair right now. Now, if it's not a fire, and it's disrepair, what do we do in that case?
This is just one of these bad fires.
Exactly. So, in my mind, I'm, you know, take 25% of somebody's insurance settlement. It seems like a fairly high number. And...
But, and it's, it's the state holding the act.
Right.
And it would be, it wouldn't apply to the latest fire, because we're in the program at the time. What I am thinking of is a number of years ago, we had a fire, and everybody walked away. I'm assuming the, the owner walked, the bank, I'm guessing got insurance proceeds, and they walked.
Right.
And, and the place just sat there deteriorating. And we ended up going through the process of declaring a hazard of structure, and the city tore it down. And I, you know, we did put a assessment for the costs for that process.
Right.
But I don't know how many injuries that, because it's set up, we have a revision that were part of it. Um, this is just put the money up front, so that we get something if we're facing that situation. I suspect that, since there would be other tenants and nobody would be able, but at least there'd be some money available.
Is it a popular program, Tom, like with other cities? From what Fire Marshal let me do, what he said, it did something, it did, it's a popular system. So, it's just another, another tool, tool belt, like I said earlier, that helps the city out with, hopefully, getting these things, these properties cleaned up.
And that only happens really when they don't do anything about it, right? Yeah.
Or they're...
Yeah. So, I mean, if they're, if they clean it up, then we don't even have it, right?
So, as insurance payout, once your insurance is paid out, it's got to be right from day one. Because insurance comes and visits your house, a day after, a week after the fire, and they write you a check out, you deposit in your bank account, you can't get access to that anymore.
Yeah.
So, this is, this is immediately when there's a fire, this goes into effect, correct?
Yeah.
Right, but they just hold it, don't they? It just goes into a holding account.
Escrow account.
Yeah.
Until, until you do something with your property.
Yep, and then if they, and then they have so long, and then if they, if they do something with their property, then that money will go back to them.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's what we would, we would probably be the, the panel to decide if they're meeting those requirements, like if they start gutting it and refurbishing it, do they get that money back to finish the project at, at that point, you know? Because at some point, they're going to need the money to fix it or tear it down, I suppose, or whatever, so. Need to withhold funds that they're, they need to finish the project also. So, but we can, we can decide that, right?
Yeah, and it's, and there is an opportunity, you know, there's a section here on releasing the funds to the, to the owner. And, you know, if they come to the city and say, yes, I fixed it, here's the bills, and you look at it, and you're satisfied, or I cleaned it down, here's the bills, and we're satisfied, or even if you wanted to, if they just showed the payback in a contract.
Right.
To, 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 to put the hammer on them to do something.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Don't just let it rip.
I don't know, I think it's, I think it would be a good idea, but...
Does it affect how they can borrow for a new mortgage if they're going to rebuild their house? Could they pay off their current debt? Or now, if they have legacy debt, 20% that they can't pay off, could they? That's, that's where it gets sticky for me. When I started out, I mean, we bought our first house, I paid like 10%, paid the PMI, PIM, whatever is the prime insurance. So, like, my house would have burned down, I wouldn't have been able to take out another mortgage, and plus, I've been paying on my current mortgage, because the bank doesn't care. That'd be my only concern.
You know, at the same time, if they're telling us that they're making progress, they've got to be working with their lender, making the lender happy that there's progress being made. Because, because they can't access the insurance money unless they keep the lender happy, or else they would just give it all to the lender. So, it'd probably be a refinance situation.
Sure.
With the old debt, plus whatever new expenses, get all the lender mortgage, they're looking at borrowing the, the funds they get from the insurance, even if they have access to every last dollar, probably not sufficient. But just, it never is.
And the, every house fire that I've been on in the last, with the investigation piece to it, the insurance investigators are there within 24, 48 hours of the incident happening, and then they look at things, and they might believe they're settled fairly quickly, and get new funds to it, so. But just again, an eye-opener, and something that protects the city, I guess, it's something that program that I feel keeps us, keeps us protected, making sure that whole thing's done, fixed up or taken care of.
Yes.
Well, I don't know if you guys want to take this on, or you want to table it till...
Table, I want to look a little more at that.
Till Joe's back.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no rush, so. Should we just table it? We don't need a motion to table it, right?
I need to, you know.
Need a motion? Okay.
So move.
Any motion to table?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Alright.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, so, we adjust that next one. Uh, seven F, GCRE, LLC has completed 73-unit multifamily development of 1,250 at 1250 Railroad Avenue Northwest. Received certificate of occupancy on December 5th, 2024.
Yep.
It has provided staff with its final cost, including projects completed this spring. So, the TIF note has been, uh...
It's asking you to execute it.
Yeah, we're just asking to approve the final TIF note and wrap the project up.
Alright. Anybody have any questions about the TIF note?
No.
No? Okay. Alright. Council to consider approving tax increment revenue note. Get a motion to...
So moved.
Execute that. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Gina Eggerd is here to explain a few things, give us some updates on the ambulance.
It's our meeting night tonight, too, so.
Yeah.
Jump back and forth. Um, so, I'm here tonight to request to add some additional responsibilities to our job descriptions, adjust them a little bit. We also had a secretary that took notes at our meetings, and wanting to add, the term of that appointment is over, so wanting to add those responsibilities to the assistant coordinator versus having additional people involved and emailing them back and forth. Do you want me to read all these out individually, or...
Yep, you would. There's three separate action items. So, the first one is the approving the assistant ambulance coordinator job description.
Okay, so requesting to clarify and update the assistant coordinator job description. Action of the council to give consideration of approving the revised assistant coordinator job description. We attach, we again added some responsibilities.
Okay. Should we just run through all of these, or Gina, can I explain what's...
In each one, and then we can take action.
In each one, and then we'll just take action.
So she can go back to her...
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. We have lifelink landing soon, so, for some training, so, that would be good. So, again, on the assistant coordinator, we added the responsibilities of the secretary. And with that, we had like a wage, annual wage set aside for that, so we add that to the assistant coordinator, too. It does make sense, we, the assistant coordinator does help a lot with those minutes already in preparing them for the meeting. And so, again, it just makes sense. Then, on the training officer, we, in talking with our training officer, it's a, it's a big role, and we do need a backup for that training officer, because we have a lot of members that work evening and night jobs as well, and sometimes aren't able to be at the meetings. And so, having a backup for that person... and so, having a backup for that person, and another person to help set up some of these trainings is very crucial. Right now, that's kind of some additional stuff. If our training officer's gone, then it just all lands on my plate, so having another person available to help with some of those things is very helpful. The training officer, our current training officer's on board, again, that term is up now, too, which is why we're making these revisions now. So, and then, with some of the responsibilities coming up, the training officer and going on to the assistant training officer, we did a... Moved some of the wage from the training officer to the assistant coordinator as well.
Okay.
So it's that...
So that's where the adjustments are coming from?
That's where the adjustments... So it's a zero dollar on our budget, we're just moving, um...
Better model going forward, where you should have the shared training?
Yes. Share a training and have an official backup person instead of just, you know, everything just lands on one person. That way, too, they can work on it together, the trainings, and work on the training and the information, putting together PowerPoints, when you have two people working on some of those things, it makes it a little more easier.
Right. And just so you can get going, we'll just jump down to seven J before we actually... And that is the pump lease with Centra Care, you got that all?
Yeah, so, the IV pumps, we had come to the council for approval last fall after being declined a lease agreement on several requests. And we looked at the pumps, we ordered the pumps, we got the pumps, and then, the Centra Care was going to program them to help, but they didn't have the Centra Care brain, if you will, in them, because they need to be hooked up to their wifi, so it's an additional box that had to be purchased. We can't buy that, that's Centra Care patented.
That's exactly the question I asked.
You did?
I did.
And we were told, no, well, we were told, yep. It was a... It was a lot of back and forth, but we were able to return those pumps, get a full refund, and now Centra Care is open to a lease. So.
Sounds good.
I think that is a much better for our patients, better for our members, we aren't trying to reprogram things.
Workful, safer.
Safer, we just continue on. This lease agreement allows us to have three pumps in our rigs that we can swap out with Centra Care. It'll have their drug library, so, and drips that they're starting, we can keep them running, there's no med waste, so it doesn't like, you know, there's twenty-two mils in those lines that the patient's, you know, not getting that antibiotic, if we're switching it on a... To a new pump and new lines, like, it just doesn't make sense, so.
Okay.
That was a really good... We are very thankful to Centra Care for. Jen, I think, put some time into that, so we are thankful that she did that, and was able to get that done for us, so.
That's good.
Yeah, and we got a refund on the pumps that, I mean, they work, they're perfectly fine pumps, they just don't have the Centra Care brains, so we can't use them how we want it to.
Yeah, right.
Good. Any questions? Thanks, Gina.
Thank you.
Well, you can bug out if you have to.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Here, can I have that?
All right, that was seven G, right? The first one we have to...
Yes, yeah, back.
Coordinator, some...
Yep, so the first item that you're going to have to look at is...
Job description markup.
Yep, seven G, please, you have to...
Assistant coordinator job description.
Yep.
Uh, motion to approve that one?
All in favor?
Second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Seven H.
Training.
Uh, yeah, that was the...
So do we have to... Do we have to do G two?
What's that?
Do we have to do these individual?
Yes, we do.
G one and G... Now, G two?
H, I think.
Okay.
Yeah. They're all individual. Called out on the agenda.
Yep.
Okay, ambulance training officer description, could I get a motion to adopt that?
So move.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Uh, seven I. Attachment, some, uh, department policy procedure markup with the adjusted wages. Can you get a motion to approve that?
So move.
You get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. And the lease agreement between the City of Melrose and Centra Care for the IV pumps.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. New business, Matt has been working on with a billboard company, interested in a billboard lease on some property that we have.
Yes, so Matta has been working on this for several months. There is a billboard company interested in placing a digital or e-billboard on the well... In our wellhead protection area. There was also some interest in other locations, this is where we are on this one. So, on May eighth, Matta was reviewing a lease with the company. They provided a word version, so Attorney Demick could mark it up and make his suggestions, and it was reviewed by Matta, and we're getting kind of close on this, but we also need to come to you, the council, because ultimately it would be signed by you, but we also need to apply for a conditional use permit, because the city has to give itself and go through the process of a conditional use permit, notifying the neighbors, having a public hearing, and all those things. It's the same thing we had to do when we put the restroom in the Sock River Park, because it was in a floodplain. So the city has to ask the same thing of itself that it asks the residents. And so, we're here tonight to talk to you about the digital billboard, make sure you're okay with it, and then we would set a public hearing at planning and zoning in July.
Good. Yeah, digital billboard, obviously, we have nothing to compare it to, other than... Other than you're driven by one. I think Donna St. Col, there's one, or else.
Albany has.
Yeah, Albany has one, yeah.
Albany Chrysler.
Oh, yeah, that's what they do. So, anyway, this is twenty-five year lease, and that's a contract, so, obviously, if somebody doesn't like it, we want to hear from them now, because it's a long time to have that digital billboard flashing at everybody. Actually, they don't actually flash, I don't think, right?
No, flashing is not allowed by our ordinance.
Right.
Right.
So it's transitioning to different ads, and these dim at night, right?
They dim at night, and also, we have not worked out the final terms of the lease yet.
Okay.
We're just making sure the council is okay with this, so we can, you know, kind of keep going on the process.
Right.
There would be constant monitoring, you know, in terms of glare, and they have to abide by the requirements of the new ordinance.
Okay. And then, as part of the lease, we would get one ad spot.
We're going to get one ad spot, and we get a percentage of the sales.
Oh, it's both?
Both.
I thought it was one or the other.
Nope.
Okay.
Matt negotiated the both.
Okay. And how are we going to know what the actual ad revenue is on it?
They'll have to deliver a report to us.
Then we're going to have to contact one of the people that have rented.
To know what it costs them.
To know what it's costing them, because, to me, that looks... It looks a little low, you know, what they have for projections, but, anyway, we'll just have to be sure and follow up on that.
So we just needed to hear sort of from the council to consider and kind of give us direction that we should keep moving forward on this, that we go through the whole process, and then the council does not want to enter into the lease.
Right.
There's state rules, too, isn't there, for being...
There is, Mindot has rules, too, about being on the interstate.
And there is a public hearing?
There is a public hearing.
But that's at...
For planning and zoning, it would be at their July meeting.
Okay, and how many people, that's three hundred feet from where it would be placed?
Three hundred and fifty feet, yeah, wrong.
So those are the people that are notified?
Those are the people to be notified, it'll also be published in the Star Post, anybody else who is interested in it. We recently also had a conditional use permit hearing on a digital billboard, which is getting put on Blue Door Storage. And so, that was technically the first digital billboard. This would be the second.
Right. I just want to make sure that, because there's probably not too many people within three hundred feet of this place, that some people around the area get notified, so we do get some type of public input on it.
Okay.
So, somebody within, you know, that lives, their house is somewhat concealed from their house, or whatever, long interstate there, I don't know if we can notify a few of these people, even though they're outside of three hundred.
Yeah, I can expand it to five hundred, or just make sure there's...
Yeah.
Can do.
That should be it with that one, right?
I'm good with it.
No decision on that one right now?
Yep.
Okay, sounds good, thanks, Sheila. All right, now, we've got... Uh, city attorney hire.
So, Scott Demick will be retiring at the end of this month as city attorney. The city sent out RFPs, and on Wednesday, June eleventh, the council held a special meeting to hear the presentations of city attorney firms that responded to the RFP. Joe Kruger with Quinn Levin, Quinn Levin and Hughes presented his and his firm's qualifications and stated he would be the primary point of contact for the city. He currently serves as city attorney for several communities, including Staples and Long Prairie. In your packet, you would have received the RFP from Quinlin and Hughes and a sample contract. They actually, as an attachment tonight, there was additional information on the legal services contract, so they did take the rate down a little bit. The shareholder's still two seventy-five, but they brought the associates down to two hundred, and then they brought the couple of the others down as well. So this is what they want us to sign. To me, this is a little late, I think that we have to have some additional language in there for city attorney, and so, but we do need to get somebody hired, so, what I... We're recommending at this time is that you direct myself to negotiate with them a contract for city attorney services, certainly happy to bring it back, and have you guys take a look at it again, but I just, we need to get this going in case we need a city attorney after June, so, I think it's close, I just think there's, you know, where's our indemnification? Where's our protections? Having just gotten this, I didn't get a chance to put that together, and the good news is, is because Scott was our city attorney for selling, we have some really good examples of language that can go in there, that I think is going to work well for us, so.
I bet he would look at this for us and tell us.
Yep. He will, I'm sure, be happy to. There's no conflict.
Yeah. Do we have to include Scott's name in the agreement, say...
Sure, yeah, if you want myself and Scott to negotiate.
Yeah. All right, so we need to direct the city administrative winner to negotiate contract with Quinn Levin and Hughes for city attorney services, and consult with Mr. Demick.
Absolutely.
Motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. On to informational items, utilities commission meeting minutes. June nineteenth, twenty-five, Streets and Parks Worker Bill Reland will commit twenty-five years of service, receive a twenty-five year recognition award of a hundred dollars, is outlined on the city personnel policy. Thanks, Bill, for your dedication. Ten C, the following is a list of schools and conferences, Civic Symposium September twelfth, tenth, twelfth. Finance Director Jackie Neos and accounting clerk Stacy Funk will be attending. That does it for the agenda, anything else we got to cover? I don't think so, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?